Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The conference is a parent.
Awesome. Okay.
Nine dollars for a bottle of water.
Right, there it is. All right. We ready?
I'm sorry, John. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you all to our council meeting this evening and call our meeting to order. Kim, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Present.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
Let the record reflect, Mr. Webb is absent. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
And Mayor Pillion.
Here. And now we are going to have Vice Mayor Anderson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Brooke Bednar from Divine Church to lead us in prayer to begin our meeting.
Let's pray. Father, I ask that you would help every one of us to serve you with a whole heart and willing mind. You, Lord, search our hearts and understand every intent of our thoughts. Create a continual desire in us to seek you, to know you more, and to follow you without wavering. Tonight, I ask that you, God, would enable our town council and town staff to be strong and courageous and to act in the best interest of our neighbors and most of all, to the glory of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Give each council member your wisdom and understanding to make the decisions needed during today's meeting. Help us as fellow residents to give thanks for the men and women that you have appointed to oversee our town. As we go about the rest of our week, may we put our hope in you only, Lord. Send out your light and truth, and may they alone lead us. I pray that you would give us all the ability to think more highly of others than of ourselves and that we would intentionally love our neighbors as Jesus Christ has loved us. I pray all these things. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Brett. Now, we will move on to approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll put that in motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, the motion was by Vice Mayor Anderson, the second was by Mr. Austin. Do we have any discussion? If there's no discussion, can will you please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye. Now, we have the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from April 26th, May 1st, and May 18th to approve. Do we have a motion to approve these as a set?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? The motion was made by Mrs. Webb, it was seconded by Vice Mayor... Miss Mrs. Quetch. I always mess it up. And seconded by Mr. Anderson. Do we have any discussion? If there's no discussion, can will you please call the roll?
It's usually me either. Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye. Okay, now, we are open for public comments. We do have some people signed up for public comments tonight. You...I'd like to remind you that you have three minutes per person or five minutes per organization. And so, the first person on the list is Mr. Dicky Kaiser of the Cruisin' Classics Car Club.
Dicky Kaiser, 18475 Ridgewood Road, Abingdon. I'd like to just take a moment here to thank Madam Mayor, members of the council, Town Manager, Police Chief, for our recent car show this past Saturday. We had a full house, absolutely no parking left, and without your all's cooperation, especially Mr. Austin, was instrumental in getting it back on Main Street this year, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We heard it was a great success. Next on the list, we have Jennifer Blankenship from the Abingdon Fiddlers Convention.
Hello, Jennifer and Carson Blankenship, 861 Barclay, Abingdon, Virginia. This is my little helper here. On behalf of the Abingdon Fiddlers Convention, I want to say thank you all so much for your donation for the upcoming Fiddlers Convention. I hope that you all have seen all the advertisements. It is, this is Fiddlers Week, so happy Fiddlers Week in Abingdon. It starts, the actual convention is on Friday. Gates open at 11 o'clock, registration's at four. The competition starts at six, and it goes until the last person plays. And then, on Saturday, the gates open, or the registration opens at 10. Competition for youth is at 11, and it goes until the last person competes. Flatfoot competition's at 8:30, so we do know that it will at least go through after 8:30. We have partnered with the Rotary Club, and they are going to be helping our gate. They will be getting a portion of that money as a fundraiser for their club. We could not do it without them, without the support of you all, the Washington County Board of Supervisors, and our sponsors. So, today, we have brought you a plaque that just basically says, "Thank you for the support of the Abingdon Fiddlers Convention. Without you, this event would not be possible." Inside here are a weekend pass, a weekend wristband for each of you all to attend, and a, some flyers in case you haven't heard about it and you want to read up on it, and hopefully you have heard about it. And then, this is the, this is the book, the program that was put together. And you notice the artwork on here, Emmy Reynolds, H7 of Bristol. We have a youth art contest, and she will be the winner of four passes. However, this has all of our sponsors, it has the schedule, it has pictures from last year. The registrations that are coming in are absolutely phenomenal. And it is, I can't tell you how many people we're expecting, but it's going to be a great event. And Wednesday is the kickoff at the Sonder and Pedaling Jack's building. They've come on board, and they are having Adam Bolt play music from 6 to 9 on their front porch. Tumbling Creek Cider will be set up selling beverages, the taco truck will be there, and somebody's selling ice cream, she told me today. They have rented one of their airstreams to someone from out of town to come in, so that we're supporting that. And then, on Thursday, I hope that you all have seen, Martha Washington has come on board. They're having a pre-event barbecue for $15 on the lawn, plus they, an open jam from 5:30 to 8:00. This morning, as of 8 o'clock, they had sold 69 tickets to that for the barbecue. So, if you want barbecue, call tomorrow and get it. They are thrilled, and just hang in there with this. This is hopefully going to be something that in five years, we look back and say, "Wow." Thank you.
Ms. Blankenship, I think you do a wonderful job with the Fiddlers Convention and the things that you do with the youth, with the Little League Baseball. I've seen you out and about in town, all over, so thank you for everything you do for the town of Abingdon.
Well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And this little guy has traveled 200-mile radius with me passing out flyers. We were at Mount, we were at Mount Airy on Friday, passing out flyers at their Fiddlers Convention, Song of the Mountain on Saturday. He goes anywhere, and he tells everybody about the Fiddlers Convention.
I've seen, I've seen your mo-
Would you like to tell him, "See you there"? Okay.
I've seen, I've seen your mother and father as well at the tavern last week, and they were telling me that y'all were getting ready to go Saturday to go hang signs up to promote the Fiddlers Convention, so thank you for all the time that you all put in for the Fiddlers Convention.
My dad has, every weekend for six weeks, has driven a 200-mile radius-
That's what he was telling me.
-into places, Kentucky, West Virginia, North Carolina, into Virginia. Post, Abingdon Fiddlers Convention signs are in gas stations across that whole area. And I will tell you, we got, I know I'm past my time, and I apologize. We got a camping and registration in yesterday, and it was from Richmond, Virginia, and I just happened to reach out, because I replied to every one of them, and I said, "How do you hear about us?" Especially if it's long. We had one from Ohio this morning, and we've got several from Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina. But that particular one, I said, "How'd you hear about us?" And she replied back and said, "We came last year, and we had so much fun that this is going to become a tradition for us." And they're coming from Richmond. So, we've got people from Raleigh coming. They're driving in here, and several of them are staying at Airbnbs, Damascus, of course, camping out there, and I hope we can work on our camping facility at the fairgrounds for that next year, maybe have some hookups. But we couldn't do it without y'all. And we already have a meeting scheduled for the week after to start planning for next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Thank you, Jen.
And one more quick thing, too. We do have Tennessee Bluegrass Band and Lincoln Hensley coming on Saturday. They're, he's from Irwin, but they are going to do educational, right after the youth competition. Anybody who wants to learn how to play an instrument or learn how to be in a band, they're doing educational seminars there. So, it'll be an hour-long educational seminar, and then they will actually close out the night while we're tallying the scores with the 30-minute. And every single one of their band members are up for multiple nominations for IBMA Award-winning instruments in, in September. But I'm gonna let Carson bring you this bag, and you just, can you just pass it out whenever you get a chance? Okay. And also, will you have somebody there on Friday night for the opening ceremony?
We'll discuss that, yes. I can't be there, but we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll find somebody.
All right. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great day.
And now, we have Ross Egan from Barter Theater.
Hey, everyone. Ross Egan, 2018 Floris Drive, Abingdon. I'm here representing Barter. I just, I know Katie was here at the last meeting, but I did want to just reach out and thank you. Specifically, coming up on Saturday with the Fiddlers Convention, that's very exciting. We also have our 90th birthday. So, on June 10th, 1933, so June 10th is coming Saturday, we celebrate 90 years of bringing world-class theater to Abingdon. And for 90 years, we've been bringing people into this region. And every time I meet a new person, a new patron, a new visitor that comes to our town and sees the theater, they always ask me the same thing, which is, you know, "How is this possible to have this level of professional theater in the heart of Appalachia with the quality, the size, and just the sheer number of performances sometimes, looking upwards to 800, 850 performances every year?" And I, I tell them all the time, you know, "We can't do this without the support of the community, without the support of the town, the county, the state." And so, I want to come here and thank you again for allowing this to happen. Over the past four years that I've been here, I've seen our relationship with this council, many members of this council, with Mike and the Town Manager, with Tanya and Chad in the Tourism Office, just deepen and blossom into something that I did not know was possible when I first got here. And it leaves me so excited, knowing that we're celebrating 90 years coming up on Saturday, to think about what the next 90 years in the town of Abingdon could bring to this community. So, looking ahead, I know that Dwayne is going to grace us with his presence on Saturdays. We're very excited about that. But we have a lot of stuff happening on Saturday in the community. First of all, at 10:00 a.m., we're doing a Barter Day, so bring food that we will donate to Feeding Southwest Virginia. You'll see the trucks in front of the theater and also in front of Smith Theater on Saturday, where you can just bring non-perishables, and you can, we'll give you a ticket to come see the show. So, harkening back to our roots on that. It's a 10:00 a.m. performance of Robin Hood. And then, right after that, we're going to have a birthday party for kiddos. We got some balloons, we got a community art project that Hannah is doing from Spot of Color with us. And then, at the 2:00 p.m. as well, we will be doing bartering for food again for your tickets to come see the 2:00 p.m. performance of Footloose, which I saw yesterday, and it is phenomenal, so I highly encourage you to come. Then, Dwayne will be coming over. We're doing an opening gala on the green, under a tent. It's going to be beautiful. And there's some representatives from the state there as well who are coming down. The Secretary of Education will be here and giving us a commendation from the state as well, as well as Dwayne presenting the commendation from the town, which we so very appreciate. So, I hope to see many of you there. I will see you there.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just very thankful that you all are supporting us again. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the moment that a lot of you have been waiting for. We are going to move on to our proclamations, and the first one is to honor and recognize the Abingdon High School Boys and Girls Regional and State Indoor and Outdoor Track Teams. So, I'm going to read the proclamation, because as some of you know, this is something that's near and dear to my heart. Whereas, the town of Abingdon wishes to honor and recognize the Abingdon High School Boys and Girls Track and Field Teams and Teams Coaches. Whereas, the commitment required for student athletes to be a part of a sports team includes meeting required academic success, attendance, and commitment to a rigorous daily training program. And whereas, the girls' indoor track grabbed the Mountain Seven District Championship, Region 3D Championship with 183 points at Roanoke College on February 18th, 2023. And whereas, on February 27th and 28th, 2023, the team captured the 3A state runner-up with 56.5 points, only three points short, at Liberty University. Whereas, Josie Jackson in the 500 meters, Michaela Jesse in the 3200 meters, and Chloe Odom in the long jump won individual state championships. And whereas, the girls' outdoor track won the Mountain Seven District Champions with 233 points at Y Central on May 17th, 2023. The Region 3D Championship with 135 points at Cave Spring on May 25th, 2023. And whereas, the girls returned home as 3A state champions with 66 points at Liberty University this past Saturday, June 2nd and 3rd, 2023. And, there's a lot of accolades to read. Whereas, Michaela Jesse won the 3200 meters in individual state championship. And whereas, the boys' indoor track garnered Mountain Seven District Champions and Region 3D Championship with 97.5 points at Roanoke College on February 18th, 2023. And whereas, the boys' outdoor track won the Mountain Seven District Championship with 215 points at Y Central on May 17th, 2023. And where the Region 3D runner-up with 107 points at Cave Spring on May 25th, 2023. And whereas, the boys returned as the state 3A runner-up with 40 points, just six and a half points short, at Liberty University on June 2nd and 3rd, 2023. And whereas, Jack Bundy won the individual 800-meter championship. And the team of Reeves-Boltwood, Teddy Pillion, Bramley Childress, Jack Bundy, won the 4x800-meter relay individual state championship. And whereas, it is with pride that the town council recognizes the commitment and dedication of these students and coaches who serve as models for citizens of the Commonwealth. And now, therefore, by the authority invested in me as mayor and on behalf of the Abingdon Town Council and citizens, I commend the 2023 Boys and Girls Track and Field Indoor and Outdoor Teams for their tireless efforts and achievements. The council wishes you all success in your future endeavors. And I think, Coach, Coach Sweeney, do you have something else? Do you have things you want to add, remarks you want to add?
I promise I'll keep this short. All these people know that I can, like, talk on and on and on, but I'm not going to. But I, yeah. I'm, I'm not going to, I promise. But I, I do just want to talk about how special this group is. A few years ago, Abingdon's Track Program was not very competitive, just to put it nicely. And in the last three years, we've become a program that people across Virginia respect and know that are going to compete very well. In the past two years, there's six, there's 12 total opportunities for state championships across country, indoor track, outdoor track, and Abingdon's won half of those. So, we've won six of the 12, and two of those this year, which are heartbreaking. We lost one by three points, girls indoor this year, and then we lost boys outdoor by six and a half points this year, two days ago. And both of those were, we had opportunities to win them. So, we've won six state championships in the past two years, and we've been second twice in the past two years. So, that's just quite an accomplishment for all of these people. And these kids have really bought into what we're trying to do and have just been extremely, extremely good representatives of our community and our school. And I and our coaches are extremely proud of everything that these young people mean to our school and to this community. And we want to thank y'all for honoring us with all that you all do for us, and we appreciate it greatly. So, thank you all.
Coach, thank you and the other coaches as well for everything you've done for the community.
So, we have certificates for each of you.
You good?
Okay. That's awesome. And I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Kingsley and to our Town Manager, because we put this all together today. We wanted to wait and find out how Saturday turned out before we got this all done. So, they've worked really hard to get this done so that we can honor you all, and I appreciate it.
It was mostly Kim. Yeah. It was mostly you.
He gave you all the credit. Are you ready? Okay, so we have Lindsay Blackman, who participated both in indoor and outdoor. Riley Skakowski, who participated in outdoor. And indoor, sorry. Aliyah Dorn. Amanda Ferrante, indoor and outdoor. Maya Hopson, indoor and outdoor. Josie Jackson, indoor and outdoor. Michaela Jesse, indoor and outdoor. Cecilia Johnson, indoor and outdoor. Chloe Odom, indoor and outdoor. Taylor Odom, indoor and outdoor. Jada Samuel, indoor and outdoor. And Ella Seymour, indoor. And then, outdoor, we also have Elena Baker. Hannah Mattney. And Ellie Ruble. For the boys' outdoor team, who came in second this time around, Owen Barr. Reeves-Boltwood. Jack Bundy. Bramley Childress. Noah Gillum. J.J. Long. Todd Pillion II, Teddy. Todd Pillion II, Teddy. Gregory Poussin. Brayden Self. Ethan Stanley. Tyler Stanley. Like you said, I didn't catch names. If I did, I apologize.
These are just for state, is that correct? I think that's what we do.
So we congratulate all the members of the team. I think these are the athletes that participated on the teams at state. We also, when we asked for the list of names, the coaches did not include their names, but I think they deserve to be recognized as well. So I know that we have Coach Sweeney and Coach Newton and Coach Martin here. They're the only coaches that are here. I'm sorry, I couldn't see you.
It's Coach Reed.
Coach Reed, I couldn't see you, Coach Reed. And then...
That's Sweeney's son.
You're hiding behind all these tall boys. But I just want to say that I've watched, I've watched these kids compete this whole year, and I'd like to add to what Coach Sweeney said with also saying that I feel like that we are also looked upon as a team that exhibits wonderful sportsmanship and that these kids are really good ambassadors of our community. And I'm always very proud of them and the way that they conduct themselves at meets win or lose. Oh, is that Teddy's? It says Todd. Ask for Teddy. Congratulations. Town manager called and asked for you to be, so he's to come here tonight, so you should tell him thank you.
Thank Kyle, he's all hooked up.
Mr. Cochran, but he said Kyle.
Ah, well, yeah, can't have it all. Take your time though.
Thank you guys for coming tonight. Thank you for coming. Thank you guys for being here, parents too. And then all of them are standing in front of me, I can't see everyone.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
One day you'll be happy to look young. Okay, so I got through that without tearing up, which was a miracle. It's tough to have a senior. Okay, now we will move on to the proclamation of National Garden Week.
A proclamation of the council for the town of Abingdon recognizing June 4th through 10th, 2023 National Garden Week. Whereas, gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, seeds, the care of all plants, and the riches of their efforts. And whereas, gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. And whereas, gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence through innovation and hard work. And whereas, gardeners advocate the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our world and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. And whereas, gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity for many citizens, for those just learning, as well as those having years of experience. And whereas, gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of life, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas, gardening enables members of garden clubs across the nation and the world to serve others in the communities where they reside and work. Now therefore, the town council and Amanda Pillion, Mayor of the town of Abingdon, do hereby proclaim the importance of gardening and the numerous contributions of gardeners and designate the week of June 4th through 10th, 2023 as National Garden Week.
Do we have representatives of the garden club? Present you the proclamation and we'd love to take a picture with you guys as well.
Good to see you ladies, all right. How are you doing? Good to see you.
I know, it's cricket.
Yes, ma'am. Cricket's now, huh? Thank you ladies, all right.
And we have one more proclamation. Recognizing June as PTSD Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation recognizing June as PTSD Awareness Month. Whereas post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, can occur after a person experiences trauma including but not limited to the stress of combat, bombings, accidents, and natural disasters, and affects approximately eight million adults in the United States annually. And whereas PTSD is associated with chemical changes in the body's hormonal system and autonomic nervous system, and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, insomnia, avoidance, hypervigilance, anxiety, and depression. And whereas the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces, who proudly serve the nation and risk their lives to protect their freedom, deserve the investment of every possible resource to ensure their lasting physical, mental, and emotional well-being. And whereas combat-related PTSD among our men and women in the armed forces is significantly pronounced, given that they are often exposed to highly traumatic events for weeks, months, and even years. And whereas despite its treatability, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to a lack of awareness of this condition and the persistent stigma associated with mental health conditions. And whereas raising awareness of this condition is necessary to remove the stigma and to encourage those suffering to seek proper and timely treatment that they may save their lives. And whereas all citizens who have PTSD deserve our consideration. And those who are affected by PTSD from wounds received while protecting their freedom deserve our respect and our special honor. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Amanda Pillion does hereby proclaim the month of June PTSD Month and June 27th as National Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Day in the town of Abingdon to bring awareness to those with PTSD and to encourage people to reach out to their fellow citizens to provide support and remove the stigma associated with this disorder.
Do we want to give the proclamation first, or do you want, there's somebody who wants to make remarks? Do we want to do remarks first or the proclamation first? Mr. Cazzer, come to the...
I say I want to thank each of you all very much for this, and I'm certainly glad no one clapped. It's a solemn and a very serious thing, so, and there's certainly men and women in my VFW post that they're fighting this thing right now, so thank you all very much.
And thank all of you.
Thank you.
Kyle, did you have remarks you wanted to make about our Veterans Advisory Board or about this proclamation?
Kyle Craig, representing the Veterans Advisory Board. In May of 2023, the Veterans Advisory Board members logged approximately 104 volunteer hours to accomplish our missions. Based on the success of our Tuesday Veteran Breakfast, we initiated a third Saturday's Veteran Breakfast meeting on Armed Forces Day. Very pleased with this project, having an average turnout of 14 to 16 veterans, with new faces every time, plus of course VIP visitors from the town council. We coordinated numerous organizations to assist the Abingdon VFW posts with a Field of Flags fundraiser. Great support from the local 1032nd Virginia National Guard Unit, known as the Ghost Riders, the Bristol Army Recruiting Office, including their future soldiers, those that have signed papers but are waiting to ship. A group from the Washington County Virginia Democrat Party, personnel from the Virginia Department of Veteran Services, and even a park visitor from Florida who was just passing through. Utilized the well-advertised and well-attended Plum Alley event to continue our Alive campaign. Collected contact information of local veterans, we added about 20 new names. However, with the Census Bureau data showing 572 veterans in Abingdon, we still have a little bit of work to do. We continue to show the colors with our attendance at the Veterans Memorial Park Foundation's Memorial Day Ceremony, distributing more, excuse me, distributing more of the community-made remembrance boppies, meeting and greeting our fellow veterans and VIPs as we continue to strive to get recognition. June is PTSD Awareness Month, the 27th being PTSD Awareness Day. Planned missions include supporting the Abingdon Fire Department in the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. Sorry, Tim. Decorating the Visitor Center for Flag Day, remembering Operation Overlord on 6 June 1944, and the US Army's 245th birthday on the 14th. Subject to your questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Let me, before you sit down, we need to give you this proclamation. You guys all like to come up and take a picture.
No, you should have started sooner.
Now I'd just like to say I'm the council representative of this group and this is the most enthusiastic group that you can imagine. There are always more plans and more excitement and more things that they want to do. So now that we've done all the fun stuff, we have a public hearing. There's no one signed up to speak at the public hearing. It is on an ordinance of the council for the town of Abingdon proposing a budget to make appropriation for the current expenses and to fix a tax rate upon real and personal property for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024. I'd like to open the public hearing. There are no citizens signed up to speak. Is that correct? And then I will close the public hearing. We have no resolutions. We do have a first reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance of the council for the town of Abingdon proposing a budget to make the appropriation for the current expenses and to fix a tax rate upon real and personal property for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024. And that is, I'll turn that over to Mike Cochran, our town manager.
Sure, thanks. Hey, good evening. I got Steve here with me also, just trying to touch in. So y'all have the long version of it, but on the short version of it, just wanted to start off, as you know, last year, June 13th was my first day with the town, that was the day we passed the budget. And I think Steve kind of chuckled and said, "It's yours." And it was kind of a big, it's a big thing to take over a budget when you don't know, you know, there's a whole lot of things going on. And so when we started this budget, we had roughly, it was a projected $2 million fund balance usage plus a $200,000 usage in order to make the budget work. And this is a tremendous amount of things given the potential to decide this budget. Wanted to just cover a couple of the accomplishments that we've been able to do over the past year, and I can't say enough about the quality and caliber of our staff. We really have some really talented folks that can do a lot of different things. The budget that we're just coming out of, we had two firemen that were added to that in order to improve response time, and then the fire chief was also working with some part-timers in order to cover the gaps, the norm peak hours, we have someone there. One of the challenges with fire service is that you need to be on scene within eight minutes or you're really, it's going to be a bad situation. So they're working hard in order to shorten that response time so we can save property and save lives. The position for Assistant Town Manager was in the budget, but it wasn't funded. Subsequently, during the budget cycle, filled that internally and then we were able to create some developmental opportunities within that department which we came from. And also is, when we started this budget year, the meadows was still brand new, it only opened midway through last year, so we kind of filled it, partially filled some of the seasons, that we had a massive rain out. So we had to have some oversight in there, so our Parks and Rec Director, Kyle, so he could actually have a life outside of work, because he was managing that, plus the department, so he was doing a whole lot. And the maintenance duties at the Meadow Command, so if you look at that and you're out there, it is maintained spectacularly. It really looks phenomenal, and that's part of it, just because we have staff that really care and they're out there all the time. If you haven't been to a tournament there, good luck finding a parking spot in the main lot, you have to go to the far lot in order to be able to park anywhere. In fact, that's just a photo from overhead from the interstate looking outwards, but you can see that was a tournament day on the left-hand side, it was absolutely jam-packed. side, it was absolutely jam-packed. And then with tourism, one of the things that had changed when I, before I came here, was the shifting away from the town actually holding events to the town sponsoring tourism-related events, so that we could have events in the town, but it wasn't actually town staff putting them on. And to that end, Tanya has done a phenomenal job working with some of our third parties that want to hold events. And we actually have one coming up on July 4th. We have, we have live entertainment and some other things happening, but it's actually going to be on July 1st, which is kind of an odd way to celebrate July 4th, but we're doing that so we can get people in to come visit and stay. And then the, at the Coon Center, one of the things that Parks and Rec had done, and this is just, it's amazing what they've done, because they've already got a great leadership team over there. The membership at the Coons, you can see it went from 2188 to 20882, which was a pretty significant increase in one year, given the resurgence and the bouncing back from the restrictions that were caused by the COVID. And then also, we have the day passes. So one of the things that, when I first got here, we didn't have, you know, the diving board was, was not adequate for the high school teams to be able to practice or whatnot, else that's the maintenance issues. So with that, we were able to replace that diving board, and because the school district, I met with the superintendent, they were actually able to get their maintenance staff to do the installation, because they had some pretty skilled folks there. So that saved us a few thousand bucks, and we got a nice diving board out of it. So now, with that, the high school team is now doing their stuff. Their swim meets there, and then they can do the dive practice, they just can't do the diving meets there because of the, the shape of the pool. Then the cast swim team, that's our own internal swim team for the kids in the community. One thing that happened during the year is that we acquired the land for the pump and skills track, and the construction's been funded. I got word today, it'll be starting in about two weeks, sometime in June. It'll be starting, and then in the later summer, they'll, they'll finish the second part of it. And part of that was because of council actions and some private funding. We were able to get that thing up and running really quickly, which was amazing. Banner poles, y'all approved that last, last council meeting, and that stuff is in process right now. The splash pad, that was also completed, and I understand that was like a six-year process, so it's nice to finally have it up and operational. The special events, Halloween on Main Street, I know we had like 3,200 people there. And just to give you an idea of how like Tanya thinks, because her mind's pretty amazing on this stuff, what Tanya said is like, we want people on Main Street, but we want people in our businesses. So by talking to the business owners, they were able to have candy, and then these parents were going into businesses that they hadn't been into before. They were like, oh, wow, I didn't know this was here. So for the cost of a bowl of candy and whatnot, we were able to get people in and into the businesses that hadn't been there before. And that was just because, and she pulled that one all together. The January Jams was held, the townwide, we've had a couple of those. And then we have other special events, like the car show that was last weekend. Speaking of the January Jams, we did get funding for next year's January Jams through the state, and that'll help make that happen. And then the Valley Street Trafficometer, striking has been done. On the Valley Street stuff, it's not 100% yet because of the logistics of how to get all the stuff done. There's different parties doing it. We're actually starting the sidewalk work on Valley this week, and as part of that, they'll be adding in some of the handicap access points that people were asking about. And then Mike Sredt in Public Works, he'll be speaking on this in a minute, but they've added VDOT. They've got a great working relationship with VDOT. They've added miles to our town roads inventory. So in addition to the state increasing what they pay, we've also added to the miles, and that's just huge, because it allows us to keep the roads as nice as they are. And then we've also been getting money from the SE, from the, it is a loan, but it's, it's 0% interest, 75% forgivable, as part of our sewer SPSS program. And then when I started here, like I mentioned earlier, we had a pretty large gap to fill, and Steve will speak on that and tell you how it worked out today.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. If y'all recall, last year, we had a tremendous amount of turnover with directors, town managers, and whatnot during the middle of the budget process. So it presented its own fair set of challenges in order to actually put the budget together that fairly represented what it takes to run the town. If you'll recall, we did use $2 million out of the general fund to balance the budget, plus $200,000 out of the ARPA. The reason we did that was threefold, actually. The first of which is some of that money out of the general fund was actually just allocating it to another account, the budget stabilization, which our Davenport financial advisors had advised us to do some years ago. And we're well on track to get $1.25 million in that budget stabilization. It's not really an expenditure, it's just moving it from one account in the general fund to another. But the reason it shows up in the budget is because it's a priority of the council. We earmark it so that we know at the end of the year, we really want to be able to move that money out. And so that's why it's put in there. So that was part of it. And then another tranche of the money was for capital projects. That's self-financing. If you have money available in your general fund to purchase, to finance your capital projects, you can do so, or you can go to the debt market. We can do additional funds, we can get loans, and pay the interest rates that are available at the time in the market, or just if your household budget, if you have enough money in your, in your coffers to buy a, a large asset, go ahead and do it, if you want to do that. And that's what the budget presented for 2023. And then on top of that, there was an excess of $1 million for operational expenses. And again, if that were a normal course of events, then it wouldn't be a sustainable budget strategy. However, again, as Mr. Cochran pointed out, the Meadows was newly opened, so we were really unsure of the revenue potential that had been forecast in the past when we went to the bond market. That was an unknown. There was an unknown of what it was going to take to actually operate the, the Meadows. And candidly, after we've been at it now for over a year, I think Kyle and others will attest that it probably took more than what we had anticipated, both from staffing, equipment, fertilizer, water, everything to keep that, that sports complex looking as beautiful as it is. So anyway, that's kind of the backdrop of where we started the fiscal 2023 budget with that allocation of general funds. I'm here today to tell you that, first of all, I'm not Nostradamus. I don't have a crystal ball. But when we're looking at the forecast with one, one month left, it is highly unlikely that we're going to have to use any of the general fund or the ARPA fund in order to meet the bottom-line budget for this current fiscal year. So the legitimate question is, well, how the heck did we get there if we had $2 million anticipated deficit, and we're not going to have one? Well, it's a combination of unanticipated revenues or underforecasted revenues from sales and use taxes were higher than we anticipated, lodging taxes were higher than we had anticipated, VDOT, as Mr. Cochran indicated, added more miles to our VDOT inventory, so that increased our VDOT funding for this year. We had tremendous income from our investments, because interest rates went from near zero to this past month, and our VIP account was 5.19%. That's an astronomical increase over what we had budgeted for this year. So all in all, we probably had an excess of $1 million in additional revenue that we had in budget. Now, keeping on on the budget as a guide, I for one, and I think Mr. Cochran shares this, is you try to be conservative with your revenue numbers. You don't want to go get too far out over your skis in forecasting how much money you're going to actually get. And so we're usually pretty conservative on the revenue side. So again, we're coming in about $1 million more on the revenue than we originally anticipated. And then on the expense side, we had savings there as well. The vast majority of the savings that we reached this year is really from personnel. That's really not a good thing, unfortunately, because that is just indicative of the challenges that we faced all year long in filling all the positions that need to be filled in order to maintain the sports complex, maintain Coon Center, Public Works, and everything else that the town does, fire and police. So we had, and Mr. Cochran will talk about this a little more, a little bit more later, but we still experienced tremendous churn in our personnel, and that's very, very expensive. You may save it on the salary for a while, but the training, the lack of productivity, the lack of efficiency in being able to provide for the, the citizens of the town, that's in that number. So there were some operational expenditures that were saved over the course of the year, but the primary savings there was on the personnel side. One point I do want to make as far as the savings, some have shared that there, did we save all this money because we weren't able to finish the Park Street? No, not at all. Park Street is a VDOT revenue share project. So if we don't do the work, which we haven't, because we've had some delays, we didn't have the expenses, nor did we have the revenue drawdown from, from VDOT as a revenue share. So when we have the expense, we have the revenue. So that's basically a wash. We didn't have either. A de minimis little amount, maybe $20,000 on both revenue and the expense side. So anyway, that's where we are right now. We're going to go into the next budget year, as we'll get to some more details in a, in a moment, with maintaining the same general fund balance that we had last year, which is an excess of $8.5 million. We have a policy, the council established a policy years ago, very prudent one, that, and again, with, with consultation with Davenport, that we should maintain 35% or $5 million, whichever is the number is higher, 35% of our local revenue. And the local revenue does not include intergovernmental revenue, doesn't include VDOT, doesn't include any estate, federal, county, any other intergovernmental rate, revenue that we may receive. That's not counted. And so we have been, the $5 million reserve floor has been intact, remains intact. It may have to increase a little bit, maybe about $85,000 in order to maintain that 35% threshold, but that is there, not touching it. We will, as of last Tuesday, I believe, we now have $750,000 of our 1.25 million budget stabilization goal. We have $750,000 of that set aside. Again, it's still in the general fund, but they're segregated into different accounts, so that we know what their purpose is for. Okay? So $5 million, not touching it. $750,000 budget stabilization, we're not touching it. And we're still left with an excess of $2 million in general fund unassigned balance. So bottom line, we're in really good shape. Any questions on how that backdrop?
Well, I have some questions. First of all, the, the fund that you talked about, the budget stabilization, and I checked with Mike, because I was told that that cannot be in the general fund. That has to be in a committed fund, and that's the way it was set up. And my understanding, he said, y'all had just done that two weeks ago, you'd moved it out. But it's, I think it's important, because that's the way it was supposed to be set up.
The, now we checked with the auditors. The budget stabilization is still part of the general fund. We can segregate it. We were originally going to put it in a separate fund, but they said not to do that, because it's not, the budget stabilization has not been funded for a specific purpose. And so therefore, it is a segregated sub-account within the general fund. It has its own name. It's not intermingled with anything else. So it, you can clearly see on, on the VIP, Budget Stabilization, but it's still an account. It hasn't been assigned to anything. Whereas one of the recommendations has been for a fluke, uh, excuse me, a fleet replacement fund. That would be different, because that money would be purely restricted for the replacement of fleets, and we couldn't touch it for anything else. The budget stabilization is there to address the unanticipated unseen fluctuations in the budget, a pandemic, as we've had in the past. If we had a pandemic, that we had a dramatic drop-off in revenue, but we needed to continue to maintain operations, that would be funded with the budget stabilization to smooth it out. That's why it hasn't been assigned to a specific category. So that confusion probably comes from my own misrepresentation earlier, because I wanted to put it into a separate fund.
When I was told by the person who set this up, that it has to be pulled out and be in a committed fund. Now, but I'll check into that.
We can check with the auditors, because I was told by the auditors.
Because, and, and Davenport, I'm sure is one of the right people to check with on that, but.
Well, Davenport was quite happy with the fact that we put it in the budget.
But I was told, looking at the balance sheet online from last year, it did not show the stabilization. And it sort of skews the numbers with the general fund, when you're supposed to have this committed fund, a separate from your general fund, because you've got to remove that money from the general fund. That's what I was told, but I will check into it. And another thing I want to point out, too, is this $5 million or 35%, I think at the Finance Committee, we decided to, local revenues was like right at $15 million, which would have added $250,000 more dollars, I think, to the $5 million. But, you know, I like to look at this, also, this $5 million that we have to keep in reserves is, you know, that's money, we really, we have a policy that says that we have to keep that money there. So it's not like, I look at it as we have $2.5 or $3 million that is actually money that we, you know, that we can spend, even though it's in our account, but we're committed to keep that, that money in reserves. Okay?
Exactly.
And I view a, a budget, anticipated revenues equals expenditures. So when you're taking each year, we did last year, and we're planning on doing it next year, 2.2 last year, which you say we didn't need and we're not going to use, and then you want to put 1.3 right now, allocate 1.3 toward, out of the general fund for next year, I just look at that as not sustainable, because we're taking this money out of our reserves.
Now, we're checking, perhaps I wasn't clear.
But, I mean, you say you, you not, you don't need it, and you're not going to use it. Well, my question to you is, why should council put it there? In fact, Mike's sent an update out that said, we're sure we're not going to need it. Well, why should we put it in there if you're not going to need it? Is it because maybe the, you've been too conservative on revenues? I noticed with meals, it's just for next year, you've just, you know, added $125,000.
Yeah, we, we maintained meals tax forecasting relatively flat, because the meals growth, meals tax growth did not keep pace with what we originally forecasted. However, lodging was extremely more than that. So again, none of us have a crystal ball. We, we look at trends, we look at the restaurant status and all of that, and we make our best educated guess. But let me get back to the general fund question again.
All right.
The general fund balance that you looked at last year included the budget stabilization money. Again, it wasn't earmarked specifically, but we knew it was there. We have the account. And so the $5 million, it's there, and it's in our VIP account, and it says, General Fund Reserves, $5 million. And we have a VIP account that says, Budget Stabilization, $750,000. That's what it's called. You can, and you'll be able to see it when I give you the report at the Finance Committee, because we wanted to segregate all that, that money, so that when these questions come up, we can say, there it is. And on top of that, we still have an excess of $2.5 million in general fund savings. And so the question to the council should be, how much money does the council have to pay or money, does the council want to hold in the bank?
Well, I don't, I don't view that as, I know you've used this phrase before, Steve, that the citizens, as a citizen, you don't want the town to hoard money, you know, you don't want us to be orders.
That's the question.
But when I see, and Mike's going to give us a report, you know, we got a lot of things ahead of us as far as infrastructure. And even with, I'll use this as an example, even with the Kriper Trail, you know, it came in $300,000 over, so we had to send them back and give us another bid on what was allocated. So, and I foresee this down the road needing more money. So, I mean, I think 2.5 million, we have to keep it at 5 million. I mean, that's no question, because, you know, we told our rating agencies that we would do that, so we have to keep it there. So. So we have to keep it there. So I always view that five million as, well, it's not really money we can, I mean, we can claim it, but still, when you promise somebody that you keep it at that minimum, then you really, the balance is what you've really got. And then when you take each year and say, in order to balance my budget, I'm going to attach two point two, and then this next year, you're going to attach one point three from the general fund. You know, I'm a little concerned about that.
And I understand the concern, but I think the misunderstanding is no one, including myself, has ever advocated touching the five million dollars.
Right.
No one. Last year, this year, or next year. That is segregated and totally identified, the same as the budget stabilization. As to whether or not it's sustainable, it would, as I mentioned, it wouldn't be sustainable if we were using general fund reserves for operations, operations. Our local revenue coming in, our operational revenue that we get should cover the operational expenses. All things being equal. But that doesn't mean that there's not an opportunity if if we don't want to raise taxes, if we don't want to do those things, and 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 there are no tax increases.
Well, can I read something actually you sent out to us last year, and I'm just going to paraphrase it. It says, and you sort of already uh said a few of these things. It says, because of the uncertainty surrounding revenue generation from the Meadows and the fact that tax rates and charges for services have not kept pace with the escalating cost, and we still have these inflationary costs, providing services and insufficient support for services, the current budget is arguably not sustainable.
Well, I appreciate you bringing up old old emails, um, but and I'll stand by those words. But as I just said it, it is not sustainable. If every budget is going to be used to cover operating expenses, okay? This past year, we did because of the uncertainty about the revenue from the Meadows, about the uncertainty about what the expenditures were going to be for the Meadows and everything else, okay? So I don't know that there's anything that you just read to me that I haven't already said again this evening.
Well, I said you mentioned some of this about the Meadows already. You did mention that.
I don't want to interrupt.
Look, go ahead.
No, okay, so I I want to paraphrase what you guys just said, the two of you, to see if I understand it and see if we can kind of put it together and see if, see if what I'm saying, see if how this is working in my brain is correct, okay? So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that our revenues cover all of our operational expenses. We have additional money in our general fund. If we have capital projects, we can either fund the capital projects from our extra money in our general fund, or we can borrow money to fund the capital projects. In an ideal situation, we won't have to use the money from the general fund because we will have more revenues than expected. But if that does not happen, although it is not ideal, it will not be a disaster because we will still have our general fund and our um, budget stabilization fund. So what council has to decide is, do we want to use the money in excess of our general fund, five million dollars, and our budget stabilization fund on capital projects, or do we want to keep it aside?
Well, can I give you a worst case scenario though? Had we used what they say we didn't use, had we used that this year, okay? We're at eight million dollars, okay? Had we used that, we'd be at six.
Right.
And then if we have to use the one point three that they want to but balance the budget with next year, then we're below our minimum.
But we didn't use it, so we are still at eight. So if we have to use one point three, we will be at six point seven, and we will still have some wickleging. Am I correct? Or I mean, I, you know, I've told you all before, I'm I've worked in healthcare. I'm not a financial person, so I'm going to ask a lot of questions like this to make sure I understand it correctly.
I think it's a matter of the council's priorities.
Right.
Again, let's send the twenty twenty-four budget guess. It does require one point three million dollars to balance. Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that, again, is not an expenditure. It's moving from one budget to the other. Okay? Then there's additional money for capital projects, the pump track, the skills track, the lighting that the latcher field, some other things. The council doesn't want to do that, that's your priority. If you say we don't want to do it, excuse me, but let me finish and answer the question, please.
Okay.
That leaves a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, okay, of the general funds to be used for, to finish the budget, okay, to balance the budget. Okay, of that nine, one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, there's a litany of things that the council views as priorities that quite frankly are not departmental expenses. They don't operate the town. They're groups outside the town. So that's in excess of three hundred thousand dollars. Again, that's a council priority, not mine or the staff. We just put the numbers together. The budget should be a guide as to what it takes to fully, functionally operate the town for the benefit of the taxpayers. If if there's a shortcoming there of any sort, we try to identify where those shortcomings are. And that's what we've done. And in order to balance, yes, it's one point three million dollars out of eight point five. Again, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of that is not part of a separate account, and it's not self-funding of capital projects.
And so if I can bring it in just slightly to the slide, this is, this is Steve's handiwork, and uh, he's uh, being very, very conservative with the estimates. So based on where we're at year to date, uh, then the June estimates, uh, and the meals and lodging uh, are lower than, lower than they should be, they're uh, because they're they're up plenty more than this right now. Uh, instead of using the two million plus the two hundred thousand in ARPA money, we're actually projected, using the conservative revenue, we're projected to finish the year with a hundred and eighty-six thousand to the good. So I mean, that's just a huge, huge, huge swing. And so when you look at the, all the different economic indicators and all the things that that we've been able to accomplish, uh, and a lot of it is, you know, uh, when I first got here, you know, Steve uh, came to me about some of the interest rates that we were getting. And we we made some movements on that, and we've had, you know, huge, huge revenue increases because of that. So we've been watching this stuff, but so the the shift is, is instead of being two point two using money that we didn't really want to spend, we're actually going to finish one eighty-six to the good, which is uh, which is high. Now, if you saw the meals and lodging from last month, uh, we had a good month, a very good month over the year to date from the year before. And so we only anticipate, um, you know, June being just as good. If you've seen the the Meadows during the events or some of the events we've had in town, I mean, the hotels are full. Uh, and the bed breakfasts are full, the restaurants are full. So, you know, we've had a, had a good, good year. Now, again, if um, if uh, things go sideways in another pandemic, God forbid, don't strike me. So, but if something happens crazy like that, then we'll have to adjust. But I can't, uh, you know, we have to anticipate that we're actually going to have, you know, that life will continue as normal. And if things don't, well, then we have to adjust. But again, I think we're in a, in a real strong position right now, and, you know, Haggis is an awesome place. So anybody that doesn't want to come visit here, I feel bad for them.
So I think Donna's concern is that every year we are, we are, she, your concern, incorrect me if I'm wrong, is that we're taking money out of the general fund every year, and you don't want to do that.
I think we can out, we can uh, appropriate it, and then that way, I I mean, I mentioned this to y'all before about appropriating, take the expenditures out and let council appropriate it instead of of leaving it in there.
But if we get into, so but but to add to that, Donna, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just trying to understand all of this. Um, to add to that, if we get into a situation and we have some capital projects, they're going to require drawing from the general fund, and things start costing more than anticipated, then we can always put a project off to the next year if revenues change in the negative.
Always amend the budget too.
Right, right. So so my question is, you know, say we go ahead and pass this budget, and something happens, and we have an economic downturn, and we don't have as much money as we thought, then we can adjust things. And we can say, well, maybe we won't do this project in this fiscal year. We'll move it to next fiscal year. And that will keep us from over, from taking too much money out of our general fund. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly.
If we got it, I mean, so this is a working, this is a working document.
Yeah, exactly. It's it's a guide. We meet monthly going over these numbers, and we watch these things on a regular basis. And so, you know, it's not like, uh, you'll, you'll pass this, and then next year I'll be back again, but you know.
So we could appropriate things, we could do the way that Donna's suggesting, where we appropriate things each time.
We can appropriate.
Or we can, the other option, and I'm not saying that one is a better option than the other, I'm just presenting both options. The other option would be to um, take it month to month, and if we see that we're spending too much money, say, well, we're going to take this out of the budget and change the budget at that point.
Yeah, so that's part, part of what my job is, is to watch all these things. And so I do, and that's part of the reason why we're able to finish this year where we were, because I knew we had a big hurdle to lead. And when we've done that, plus the performance from staff and a couple of other things. Uh, you know, one of the ways we save money as a town is staff does the work. Uh, you know, there's several projects we've done in town that cost us a couple of grand. But if we had paid to have it done, it would cost us forty grand. So, you know, we do what, we try and work smart as much as we can. And so, but as a uh, as a month to month thing, yeah, if if things, you know, I can't imagine what would happen. But if you had another pandemic situation, and all of a sudden meals and lodging went to the floor, we would have to adjust just as the town adjusted in the past.
And we did, we made some big cuts.
And we did that before, to over two million dollars.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, and so that's why we look at this stuff on a regular basis. And that's what we mean as a finance committee, go over these numbers. I mean, the staff looks at these things. This is, it's something we do for a living, so we watch this every day.
Okay.
Well, there's another thing that is a reoccurring expense that is a concern for me with the report that I have here is, is personnel, just for this year, okay? It went from six point five to eight point six, okay? Uh, so I'm not sure that's sustainable.
Yeah, without, without seeing the 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 report you got in the Genesis board.
Well, it's the one I had you to print for me from.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's the same report, and I mentioned it, but I'm not sure that's sustainable. Now, last year, when Steve came before us, he had the department heads to sort of put together a staff, uh, a full staff, so the council could know what a full-staffed budget would look like for the town. Is that correct?
Yes, it's in the back of your.
Okay.
It's in the back of the budget book.
Under personnel.
Personnel section where it talks about the churn that we've had over the years. Then it shows by department, full-time, part-time this year, what it was last year, what the variance is between the two. Then there's a sheet that shows you all of the open positions at the time of the budget. Uh, keep in mind that that is a moving target during the budget process. The budget process has been going on since December. Uh, we've had twenty-some-odd percent churn during this period, during this fiscal year. So people have come and gone, so that is a moving target.
Well, I, I mean, I really would like to know the net.
Pardon me?
I mean, I would like to know the net, and I think you all tried to give me a net in this last report. But I, but the, last year, I think you put twenty-one point five employees added to the budget.
Those were open accounts.
Open, that's right, open.
They were open.
Yeah, and that was from where we lost people, yeah. Uh, so.
You know, again, the question is, does, you know, does the town want to operate with a fully functioning staff? And again, from a budget, the budget is a guide. And so do you want to budget for understaffing the town?
We want to budget what's sustainable.
Well, again, what's sustainable, if the the town can no longer sustain adequate staffing, then that's another discussion.
So we got into that kind of trouble.
To what taxes are we going to raise when we reach that point?
Well, Donna, you had a comment, just here, our annual forecast is going to be a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to the good. That's, that's, that's beyond sustainable. I mean, that's actually, we're, we're actually ahead of the game. We're not raising taxes. This budget was the existing budget, and we did pretty good on it, and we're still doing pretty good on it. But some of that's because of the increased revenues from meals and lodging. Our tourist numbers are through the roof. We're doing very good in those areas. And those are the things that make Haggis a place that people want to come visit. Uh, and, you know, that's just one of those things that we, this is a tourist economy. We have roughly thirty-three percent of our revenues come from uh, meals and lodging and sales tax, which is, we're very, very fortunate.
And if it became unsustainable in the future, then I guess we could do things, although it was a very unpopular decision, like we did in the past, where we had to change some of our personnel numbers. Correct? Or we could decide we want to spend more money on personnel and less money on capital, or we would have to make those sorts of decisions if it became unsustainable. Am I correct? And I think that.
Look at revenue sources as well.
And I think Donna's concern is that it just, you know, seems to continue to rise.
My biggest concern is, a balanced budget for me is appropriated revenues equals expenses, you know? And where we're having to take from the general fund, general fund reserves to balance our budget, you know?
But only a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Well, I'm saying, you started with two point two, and next year you're putting in one point three.
Which actually is a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of operating expenses. I think that, I I really want to stress that, as being very, very clear. Again, moving money from a checking account to a savings account when it's in the same fund is not.
I get, I get that, Steve.
Okay, but I'm just saying, that's part of that number.
I know, that's a transfer, uh, yeah, it's a transfer.
Part of that one point three million, though. And then a large portion of it is for capital projects. Again, if you don't want to do the capital projects.
Well, I just think the best thing for council, and I have to have everybody on board, is just to do the appropriation.
And is that something that we can, I mean, we're not voting on the budget tonight.
No, we're not. In fact, we don't vote, we, we still, I think, have to have more discussion. We don't vote until the middle of the month.
Okay, so that's something that we can talk about amongst ourselves, whether or not we want to appropriate it or change things as needed as we go on. I have one other question that's good, that's brief, that's going to revisit what you talked about before, and I just want you to clarify it for me so that I understand it. So the one point four million dollar Park Street project was in the budget, but it's, it's not money that, that we didn't use that money to plug a hole or to do anything. That money is 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 as if it were never there.
We budgeted the revenue, we budgeted the expenses, neither of them happened. It washes out.
So it's like a Z right? Okay, and I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly. But hopefully in our next budget, we will actually get to spend that money.
Yes, yes. Yeah, because we actually have the, all the property now is, oh, the easements are in place, and I believe it's getting ready to go out to bid. I think Mike will talk about that in a couple of minutes.
That's something I get asked about often by people who live on Park Street, so I'm excited to hear that sound.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a huge, huge change. Uh, to be able to get that thing done, it's been in the books for, I think, six or seven years, something like that, it's a long time. But uh, anyway, so if.
So we need to discuss the the questions we have amongst ourselves, and then we'll just, we'll, we'll um, address them at our next meeting.
Yeah, no, I got a few more slides.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Pardon.
Uh, this is just the bird's eye view of of the existing proposed budget, and you want to cover that a little bit.
Which one?
Yeah.
I'm on vacation, so I didn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is, this, so uh, general fund reserves, as Donna has mentioned, is uh, this is based on uh, one point three four nine of a million of general fund reserves, uh, two hundred and four thousand is loan proceeds. Uh, and then we have eight other agency revenues uh, coming in at four point two four eight million. It's twenty-one percent of the budget miscellaneous expenses, uh, it's uh, fifteen thousand. Uh, charges for services is a million six one, and then use of money in property is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Fines, forfeiture is another twenty-one thousand, uh, permits is about eighty-eight thousand. Local, uh, other local taxes, three point nine million, and then general property taxes, three point two. And if I can just point that out, that three point two uh, is 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 huge because that's general property taxes. That's what you're paying for your, for your house and and stuff like that. Uh, sixteen percent. That's just, it's a really big deal for us because most other governments is substantially higher. That's because we have such a beautiful place that people want to come and visit.
Small town.
It's a tourism town. It's just, it's amazing. And then if you go over the uh, the general fund expenditures, uh, and this does balance out, is the operating expenditures is seven point eight, uh, eight eight seven, transfers of three hundred and thirty thousand, you have debt service, one point four million. Uh, the non-departmental is forty-two five, awards and commissions is fifty-four seven. Capital projects is eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Capital projects, uh, other than capital, is the six thirty-six, and then contingencies fifty-eight thousand five hundred. And then personnel is eight point nine five one million. So that, that does balance out in in its total based on the general fund usage. And then we've got this highlight page.
Yeah, as I mentioned before, this is where, you know, there are things on the, if you look at the general fund summary sheet. As we've been discussing, the operating revenue, eighteen point seven million, we were taking out loans for some patrol cars as a fleet replacement, instead of paying cash, because that would be a recurring thing, that would also tie in with the fleet fund if we ever get one established. This budget does have that. The debt service for that loan is also included in the debt service on the expenditure side. The use of the general fund reserves, probably shouldn't say reserves, it's just because it's not part of the five million dollars, it's not part of the budget stabilization, it is part of the general fund balance. That's what brings us to the total revenue. As Mr. Cochran indicated, then you see the expenditures associated with the operating personnel, departmental capital outlays, which are different from the capital projects. Capital projects typically are twenty-five thousand dollars or more, typically span more than several years, sometimes take the acquisition of land and the construction of buildings, which is why patrol cars are not in there. The other departmental capital budgets may be lawn mowers, things of that nature that are not in there, but that is part of the budget, that is not being funded with the reserve or the balance per se, it's being purchased with the revenues that were, that were being generated. So, when you look at the operating expenses total, nineteen million, slightly more than eighteen, but then you look to see, okay, what are we using that money for again? Whether it may, whether it matters or not, I'm not sure. Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars again is going into another savings account.
Transfer.
It's not an expenditure, it's a transfer. It's part of the one point three million dollars, okay? In order to get it to balance. Then the eight, then the capital projects as well, that comes, those two things come to one point one five eight million. So, a hundred and ninety-two thousand less is what's used, the general fund balance to balance expenditures. So, what are the things that we don't? You can look on the sheet there to see some of the non-departmental expenditures. Those are council's priorities. The council decides what they want to spend that money on. If you don't want to appropriate money for personnel, but you want to continue to do this, that is your prerogative, but this budget includes all of those items.
Well, for council, I think, I can say for myself, sometimes it's a, you know, it's a balancing act here.
Yeah, and so, as, as we started this budget process, one of the things I wanted to make sure that we did was, we have some NGOs in town, specifically the Barter, and we have some other things that we fund in town with, with town revenues. And so, yeah, recommended in this budget is funding the Barter Theater, yeah, two hundred thousand, which is what we've been funding them for, for a while. But that way, it's in the budget and it's upfront, not just piecemeal throughout the year. We have the Washington County Library, seventy-five hundred, the Overmountain Victory Trail, for twenty-five thousand. And for those of you that haven't been to the Overmountain Victory Trail, go there and talk to them, and read through the stuff, because when, when you actually listen to what they do there, there is a lot of historically significant things that happen there, it's pretty neat to listen to. So, we had a park ranger came in. Oh, sorry. We had a park ranger that came in, and, and amazing stuff, so we did some good things out there. And then the Chamber of Commerce, we funded fifteen thousand, the Housing Authority, twenty-five thousand, Arts Commission is fifty-two, fifty-two-two this year, and then the DDA is another ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-four thousand. And then, the one thing that, that we looked at as part of our operational thing, is when you come to public works, is, you know, ordinances require or call for people to participate in the garbage collection. And when we started analyzing the numbers, what we found is that we have a whole lot of people, I'm sorry about the misalignment on this, this slide, but the, we have a lot of folks that don't have garbage collected. And so, what's happened, and Tanya has seen it firsthand, and I think some, some of y'all have seen it as well, where people don't have garbage collections, they throw things in your dumpster, or in our case, they throw it at the, at the farmer's market, or they throw it at, behind Tanya's office over there at the Penn Center, or they throw it in the dumpster at the restaurants. And so, it's because people don't want to pay for garbage collection, and so we wound up having, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred units that, that aren't participating in our garbage collection, even though they're supposed to by ordinance. And when that happens is, there's a couple of things, like with the solid waste collection and all, people, and you'll see it, they just throw stuff on the side of the road, and then it sits there for a while. And so, the, the challenge is, is this is a beautiful town full of tourism, and no one really wants to see a pile of junk on the side of the road, no matter whose junk it is, we just want it gone. And I'm sure I frustrate and like it sometimes, because I drive around and see stuff, and I ask them to get it, and, and they do an awesome job with it, though. But the thing is, is no one wants to see that, we just want it gone, I don't care where it goes, but I just want it gone. And when we don't have everybody, everybody participating in the garbage program, we're still picking up their stuff, it just, we're, we're leaving, you know, we're just doing a disservice to everybody by doing that. So, we're looking to add, add to those, and then also add to the, to the businesses as well, because we have businesses that don't necessarily, because, like, a lot of them will have private trash service, but they don't have bulk private trash service, and so they just, the bulk just happens. And so, we recognize that bulk happens, so our goal is to just, you know, add them to our collection list, but also get rid of their bulk, and get rid of their tree trimmings and stuff like that, so they won't have piles of stuff sitting on the side of the road for a long period of time. Again, our staff is out there, you can see them, they have the grapple truck, and they really get after it, there's a whole lot of stuff that's on there, that, you know, for, that we still need to pick up. And so, that's one of the things we've worked on, the staff, and worked on what we can, also a couple of things for that. So, and on the sewer fund, working with Davenport, we've gone through, with the sewer fund, basically you've got three point nine million operating revenue, thirty thousand seven hundred non-operating revenue, three point six million projected grants, two million thirty-seven thousand projected loans, use of sewer fund reserves is four hundred twenty-four thousand nine ninety, for a total of ten point oh eight million. The sewer fund reserves is essentially to take care of a lot of deferred maintenance items, we have, we subcontract that out to Liburn and Curran, and they brought in their experts, and then we have our engineers double-check everything that they're asking for, but ultimately, it was coming in, is they have some deferred maintenance items to get fixed, and so we're using reserves for that.
And if I could add.
Sure.
One of the reasons that we didn't want to go and get additional debt for that deferred maintenance, number one, these are critical infrastructure things that need to be done at the wastewater plant to keep sewage out of the streets and everywhere else. We didn't want to go to the debt market to get any additional debt, because we did get the VRA loan that we needed to worry about for the I and I project, which was over five million dollars, and they're also looking at an additional nine million dollars for the I and I project on other parts of the town. So, the last thing we wanted to do was to encumber additional debt. The council can make whatever decision they want to in that regard, but that's why sewer fund balance was used for deferred maintenance.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, previous councils have gone to the sewer fund to borrow money if the budget didn't balance, and we don't do that anymore.
That is correct. When I got here, the, the general fund owed the sewer fund six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
So, we have, we have repaid that, and we no longer tap the sewer fund for anything but sewer-related expenses. Well, I see that, I see that as a move in the positive direction. I think, I think.
We try.
Yes, I, I think that, that's something that we should highlight, that we have done well.
I, I would like to also point out that the personnel totals has gone above and beyond what a fully, with, what a fully-staffed sewer fund included. So, and I believe that was twenty-four people at the time.
Of the sewer, of the enterprise loan?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they weren't general fund employees, right?
No, they weren't. I'm just saying, when you put the two together, or when you, I've got the sewer fund here separately, and now, our, just our general fund is going beyond what it costs for both of them. So, we've gone as if, you know, we still.
Wages have certainly increased, there's no doubt about that. Social Security wages actually increased, my wife got a much bigger raise than I did on Social Security, as far as, as far as the percentage rate goes, so, yeah, you're exactly right, the wages have increased, and the budget does, again, it's budgeted with a fully-staffed, functioning town, with a five percent COLA. Last year, if you recall, we entered, the, the council approved a COLA that was a minimum of thirty percent less than the state and our neighboring jurisdictions gave their employees. So, we kind of started off behind the eight ball. This budget also is only with a COLA, no step increases or anything like that, so.
But, so, onto the next, the one thing I wanted to mention, just as Steve has mentioned earlier, is, is the churn, and one of the things I've tried to do, and, and it's just been a hallmark of how I've always operated in my career, I try and create a place where people want to work and people want to stay, because employees that feel valued and, and whatnot, they provide a better level of service. Do they always do it? You know, I don't know, but I like to think that people that feel recognized and, and feel valued also want to stay, and also, you know, provide a better level of service on the backend, and then, so, these are the numbers, so, if you look at the beginning of any of the year, and the amount of positions that flipped through the year, obviously, I came here midway through, midway through twenty-twenty-two, June thirteen, and there was a lot of transition before I got here, so we've had a really, really high number on the churn, and then, and year-to-date for twenty-three, we're at twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-three, we're also at twenty-three percent. A lot of this is coming out of public works, because as you know, the, the CDL driver situation, it's really, really challenging for public works to be able to staff those positions, because the private sector and the CDL world pays decent money, and so we've done a lot to try and develop our own employees that we've already helped keep them. And some of this stuff that comes from the employees, I, I look at it as, when you drive down the street, and, and they know who lives there, because they're, you know, that's, that's the value that you're not going to get from a third party that does anything, or a person who's brand new, unless they grew up here, they don't know who lives there, and what I like to do with, like, with public works, if someone's, you know, incapacitated and they know it, they know to stop and grab their can for them. I mean, it's just, they're, they're small little quality life things that, that you don't get unless you have longevity. And so, that's part of what we've been trying to do, is to make that happen. But if you look historically, the town, in, in years gone by, twelve, thirteen percent is on average, is, is a, you know, a decent goal. One of the challenges in the last several years, because of some of the changes in how the whole employment picture works on a global level, particularly in the government sector, is there's been a heck of a lot of turnover, and I recognize that. So, one of the things I try to do is, again, I create a environment where people can feel valued and respected, and then also is have developmental culture. And so, the, the goal is just to reduce that churn number, because the lower, the less churn you have, the, the better quality of, of outputs you're going to get. And so, the, one of the challenges, as I mentioned, and part of my budget narrative, talks about the, the cost of over, or the cost of that turnover, and for our general employees, it's expensive, you know, because you, you turn people over, but it's super expensive for the police chief, because he sends people off to the academy, and, you know, it's roughly fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars to train an officer to be able to answer a problem themselves. And then when you lose them, within a year or two, it's a really, really expensive way to, 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 you know, to train and develop people. And so, the goal there, and he does an excellent job with keeping officers happy and all that stuff, but as a, you know, as the guy who's trying to help everything happen, like, you think that one or few, one or two times that you might actually call for police in your career or your life, you know, those are the times you're going to have a positive interaction. But if they just started last week, not that new guys aren't great, but they don't always, you know, they're not as, as efficient sometimes, just the folks that have a lot of seasoning. And the chief's done well with that, but it's just one of those challenges, is that we want to be able to keep people and, and keep them, you know, working, because they provide an excellent level of service. I use a public works as an example on some of that, public works, some of the work they do, I mean, I, I'm still stunned, I was talking to someone today about the, about the splash pad and the brickwork they did around that, that stuff. I mean, not only did they put the brick down, but they built the frame around it, it's got a two-inch slope, so it doesn't flood, it's got drain pipes on it, did all that stuff, so, you know, we bought the supplies, they did the work. There's no way we could have afforded that if we had to pay for it. But since we have, since quality employees, and some of our more senior people are also the ones that are public works, who help guide these projects, but we've got excellent employees, and the idea really is, is to be able to, to keep those folks and, and keep them, keep them working, because we've got some really good ones, and so. Oh, did I do? I think John, so that is, that, that concludes, yeah, so, sorry about that, John. That, that concludes the, the basic presentation on that. And again, if you have any, any specific questions, I can, I think John can email out the PowerPoint if you have any questions, but they were largely grabbed right out of the question book.
So, I guess, if that brings us to the end of that, then we just need to discuss this amongst ourselves and decide the direction that we want to take and the changes that we want to make, and I'm sure that we will have a robust discussion amongst council members over the next few days.
Cool, thank you, Mike.
And I just want to add, this is one of the, the, if not the most important job we do as council. This is our budget, and it's important that we be involved and take it seriously. So, and as Chair of the Finance Committee, I just feel, I feel, feel responsible, you know, so I take it seriously.
As Chair of the Finance Committee, you should be proud, because we'll finish the year a hundred eighty-nine thousand to the goods, so two point three million less than we were budgeted, so we had a heck of a year.
We haven't finished a year yet.
Well, Mayor, let me say a couple of things, if I could.
Certainly.
First of all, I think that the discussion we've had tonight, the explanations we've had, have been a very positive and a very healthy discussion, and, and I like to hear that. Donna's asked a lot of good questions, and with her position on the Finance Committee, her knowledge as a business owner, you know, she brings a lot to the table, and I respect that, and, and certainly like it. I sat and listened quietly, and I did that intentionally, because I wanted to hear the various explanations of the issues that we've discussed before. And I think we all have the same goals, and I'm, I'm proud of that. We want to continue a positive direction with town services, and providing all of the things that we can to the residents, while maintaining the same tax rates, the same taxes, and, and not having any increases. And I've read recently, you know, there are a number of neighboring jurisdictions, because of various reasons, what they're talking about in their budgets, currently are how, what taxes are we going to raise, and to what extent are we going to raise those taxes? And I'm really proud to sit here tonight and say, that's not on the table for us, that's not a consideration. We have a budget that is moving in an appropriate direction without any increase in any of the taxes to the town citizens. I listened intently, too, with the explanation of, are we, for lack of a better term, robbing from Peter to pay Paul by taking out of reserves to balance the budget? And I appreciate your explanation of, of that, and I understand that, and it appears to me, from what you've told us, that at worst case, that's very minimal in nature, and that, that satisfies me to, to a great extent. So, as the mayor said, I think we'll continue to, to work through with this budget in the coming days, but, you know, I'm really proud and, and pleased with what we have here, and I think you've done a good job.
And the nice thing, too, as you just mentioned, I appreciate that, the, as you look at where our meals and lodging, our meals and lodging aren't where our neighbors are at. We're, they're going to place themselves out of the business, which is good news for us, because if anybody looks at how much they charge for the taxes, maybe they'll come stay in Abington and have a meal while they're here.
Well, and I, I would like to second everything Wayne said, and I, and I think that as a council, we, we talk about these things amongst ourselves a great deal, and we do all have the same goals, and we all want the same thing, and.
What's best for the town.
Exactly. And, and I appreciate, I've never been this deeply involved in a budget process, although I've been on council for a little while, because now I'm on the Finance Committee and in a more leadership role, but you guys have been amazing at answering any questions that I have with patience, and, and in a way, that somebody who's, you know, it's like I always said, I, I took calculus in college, but I did not take accounting, and it's a very different type of math. So, I appreciate your willingness to explain all of this to us with great patience, and to, and to entertain all of our questions. It means a lot, and I know sometimes it becomes tedious, because it seems like we ask the same things over and over, but, but we appreciate your hard work.
I saw calculus book in the bookstore, but I didn't know that.
I couldn't do it now, I did it then. That's, that's, that's the caveat there.
Well, I like the ability to monitor these things, Steve, that was something that I neglected to say, and I, I have confidence that, that you gentlemen will continue to monitor that, as you do, very closely, and the first signs that we have that anything is going to arrive. And the first signs that we have that anything is going to arrive, we can make corrections that's necessary.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so we have no second reading of ordinance, oh, oh, shall the proposal be rejected? If there are no comments, the ordinance will move to a second reading, and that will be at our mid-month meeting, am I correct? Thank you. Okay, so now we will, we have no second reading of ordinances tonight, we have no bids to consider, we have no new business or old business on the agenda, but we do have some miscellaneous business and communications from the town manager. And I think that includes a quarterly report from our Public Works Director, Michael Sarek.
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for letting me come up here and talk about Public Works, which is what I do every day. So, to start off, you know, just to give you some background, what is Public Works? You know, Public Works encompasses everything people in local government do to provide and sustain the structures and services that we count on for an acceptable quality of life in our community. So that's what Public Works encompasses. And, you know, what operations happens in Public Works, I think the town manager alluded to all the stuff that we do. So this is just a little list of what everything goes on in Public Works. You know, we do administration management, construction management, we do emergency management, engineering and project management, facilities, grounds, urban forestry, fleet services, rights of way, you know, solid waste collections, transportation and water resources, which encompasses stormwater and wastewater. So that's just a list of everything that goes on Public Works, which is kind of big. And, you know, in our current staffing levels, you know, current, just like they alluded to, you know, we're at about 85%. You know, my supervisors have been interviewing this week, and we're trying to fill those last few positions. And like the town manager had said, that, you know, it is important to retain these people because of all the things they do, all the things that Public Works does, provide all those services in a timely manner for the citizens. Now, keeping those people on board is extremely important to me, because the more they know, the easier it is for us to do everything that we do on a daily basis to keep the town running smoothly. Because these guys are the backbone of the town. They are the main cog that keeps the town running. Yep, we get a lot of tourism, these guys are the ones that keep the streets running, the signals running, and all of that, and keeps the traffic flowing in town. So some of our town projects that we have going on in town, you know, some of our keynote projects, we have a, a new one that's come on board as a keynote project, where we were just awarded a smart scale project that we had been working on for the past six or seven years with VDOT to get this funded. The Cook Street Extension from Town Center down to Stone Mill Road, next to where the old Kmart is. So we finally did get that through the CTV and get that project funded for 27 million dollars. It is one of the biggest project, no, it is the biggest project I have ever gotten from VDOT. So that's a pretty big deal, because I've been working on this with VDOT for many, many years, trying to get this thing through and get it funded through smart scale, and it's fully funded.
Good job.
Our East Main Street drainage improvements, you know, is 3.9 million dollars, it's on track. We're hoping to get that thing out to bid and advertise, you know, by the end of the summer and get it going, so it's doing well. Our sanitary sewer improvements, our Phase One construction project, which the town manager had mentioned in the budget, 3.3 million dollars for our INI improvements. It's on track with our consultant. Again, probably in this next fiscal year, we'll start expending that funds. We are looking at the Town Creek and Exit 19 Fort Main, which some of y'all might have heard down the road in some of these sanitary sewer projects. Now, this one was not in the Phase One of the SSES, it was a project that had been sitting on our shelves for a while. And we are looking at working with DEQ to get, you know, some grant funding to get this done, so we don't have to encumber the sewer fund. So we're hoping to get that thing done either in one of the VRA loans that we have. Our parching improvements, again, it jumped a hurdle, and we're pretty proud of that. We finally got through all the right of ways, and it is moving forward. We're really excited to get that thing going, and one of my biggest statements to the staff is, let's just get some shovels in the ground. We need to get this thing done, get it off the table. It's been laying there since 2017, so we need to get it done, but it is moving forward. The Creepshow, Trussel repairs, we did get the, the bid scheduled back and a new proposal from the contractor. We'll be bringing that at the mid-month meeting, so it's on track to be on budget and on time. So all those are our keynote projects, but we also have about 22 projects on our queue that's sitting on our project board. And Kevin Worthy does a great job of managing these, him and Megan keeping up with the contracts and the projects, they do an excellent job, but we do have 22 town projects. So in our six-year, our VDOT six-year improvement plan, you know, we have 16 projects in there that are the town of Abingdon, which are funded. You know, we have a highway safety improvement program for 514,000 dollars for systemic safety initiatives that we got awarded. You know, we have about, now we have a little over 30 and a half million dollars worth of smart scale projects in the six-year plan. Study go repair, we were awarded a million dollars this past fiscal year, and they should be finishing that up this month on East Main Street and Jonesboro Road. So those asphalt improvements will be done, which is fully funded through VDOT. Our park trees improvements, like I just said, on track, we're hoping to get that thing going and get it, get it done and get it off our board. We were just awarded, which you guys approved, a VDOT pipeline project study for 100,000 dollars for the US 11 Main Street corridor. That should be kicking off this month. We're already, you know, in contact with VDOT, and they're in contact with us to get that study going, so we can find out some projects from that that we can, we can get done. So really, in our six-year improvement plan, we have about 33.9 million dollars worth of projects that are funded, that the town doesn't owe for. It doesn't encumber the budget, so that's a good thing for us, that we get all this done. And it's a testament to the staff over there that works very hard to find this funding, to get these projects for the town, to keep improving our town.
And if I don't mind, just one second, it's because he works, Mike works so well with VDOT, they know him and he knows them. And it's just, it just, it really helps when you got a good relationship with those folks, because they could very easily not work well with them, and then we'd still be looking for it. So he does a great job with that, and also on that second part of that, the 27 million, you know, there's another section to it, which we hope to get. He's got a great relationship, we hope to see that one come through as well.
Yeah, me and the VDOT planner have already talked about the Frenchmore Boulevard extension to make, make that connection. So we're going to keep working hard at trying to get, you know, funding for that side to make a complete connection between Jonesboro Road and Coming Street. Also, so this past year, we have some completed projects that we finally got off of our board. One of the first ones is the Veterans Park Waterfall. Matt Henderson and the facilities guys did a great job of rehabbing that old waterfall, refurbishing it and getting it back running. And it's a great amenity to the town when you enter from Coming Street. We did finish up the, the splash pad over at the Sports Complex. Like the town manager alluded to, our guys went out there and built that brick deck around it, and it is, it, it turned out better than I had ever anticipated. I was so surprised when I went out there and seen it, I, I just, I can't brag on those guys enough for what they did.
Did they also do the, the splash pad itself?
No, ma'am, that was, the splash pad itself was built by a contractor, and it was professionally installed. Just the decking around it and the fencing and stuff, our guys did.
It looks great.
Nice.
It, it looks amazing. We did just now, this past month, finish up our Type A pavement marking to refresh all the lines and gore areas and make the town, all the streets look good after the winter, because winter takes a toll on all of that. And Hutton Street Project, you remember back last summer, you know, we were doing Hutton Street Project to make that connection, and we finally did make that connection and fill that gap on Main Street between Hutton Street and Rugby Terrace. We also had finished up repairing the Green Spring Road culvert, it's now operational and everything looks good there, and, and that was a, a good thing to get done. And we did finish up the railroad pedestrian bridge that everybody had contacted us about, and when is it going to be done? But it's done, it's been in operation, and I see a lot of people using it and walking across it, so, so that's really good. Some of our sanitary sewer projects, you know, like I said, we have our SSES Phase One construction that's getting ready to kick off. The lane group is doing the design, and we're hoping to get that out for advertisement probably August timeframe, middle of the summer. And we have a Phase Two, which we will be, we are currently waiting on VDOT for some terms and conditions on that VRA loan. And we'll have more on that when we get done talking to VDOT and Allen Cornett about that. Our preliminary engineering report from the Wolf Creek Water Reclamation Facility and our pump stations, we're expecting that to be done by the beginning of the new fiscal year. We should have that in hand from the lane group, they're working on it, and they said they should have it to us by then. And again, the Southview Pump Station, we're looking at doing a replacement to that pump station. We're going to look for some grant funding or some, some, maybe a VRA loan, I don't know, but we're looking at trying to find some funding to replace that. And the Town Creek Sewer Replacement, we're also, like I said before, we're looking to be able to get some funding to do that, with the Exit 19 Fort Main replacement also. So, dividing over active projects, you know, our funds, we had four projects for like five and a half million dollars. We have two of them that are done and completed, we have two that are on track to be under contract and into construction by the end of this year, which is our timeframe to be there. And I'm fully confident that that's about to happen.
That includes the flood mitigation.
Yes, there'll be flood mitigation, and the trust over pairs is the last two that's left there. We have the two sanitary sewer projects in their VRA loans that are funded. And we have, we do have a secured loan from VRA for 9 million dollars for additional sanitary sewer work. Again, we're waiting on the terms and conditions for that before we can move forward. In the VDOT Smart Scale Project, the funded project, we have five of them in there for about 30 and a half million dollars. And our urban maintenance projects, there's eight of them, which we use our urban maintenance funds for some of these projects that we do in town, which require repairing, maintenance, and equipment and stuff like that. So again, I always come in here and I talk to y'all about urban maintenance funds, so what are urban maintenance funds? Urban maintenance funds are funds that are allocated to us from the Commonwealth Transportation Board. We get those on a quarterly basis, and these funds are used for signalization, roadway sidewalk repairs, traffic calming, safety, you know, all these items, snow removal, bridge inspections, shoulder work and drainage. So that's what funds all these repairs. What we can't use them for is new construction, we can't build new roads, we can't build new sidewalks, we have to go find other funding for those. So we can't use these funds for that. And our current allocation now, so the town manager had mentioned that we just added a bunch of miles. We were at like 1.7 million dollars a year, and now we're at 2.1 by adding like 25 street sections. So we're doing well, and the urban maintenance funds will be able to maintain our roadway sections and our signals. So this slide here, in the next 30 years, is what we look at down the road. In the next 30 years, there's approximately in our queue right now, 50 and a half million dollars of projects in the next 30 years. And that's what the 30-year VRA loans. So how much does that encumber the budget? Very little. Very little will be encumbered in the budget. All these are grant funded and projects. So it's, I think that the number is very low, it's like three to four million dollars over the next 30 years that we'll have to expend out of the general fund for 50 and a half million dollars worth of projects. Have you questions? It's pretty exciting.
I get to hear this in infrastructure.
Yes, Donna hears, hears me talk about this all the time, how exciting it is, and, and I come and tell her that, you know, hey, we got this new project, really?
Got all this money.
Yeah.
I'm really excited about the Frenchmore Boulevard, the Cook Street Connection, Coming Street, that's a big project that's on my list, so very happy about that.
You guys do a great job of finding money and of keeping things affordable for us, and you do a great job of keeping our town looking great, and I just learned a lot about Public Works. When people ask me if I like being mayor, I say, yes, it is the most educational experience of my life to date, because I, things like this that I would not have known about otherwise. So thank, you, you explained it very well, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Do we have any other communications from the town manager?
Uh, just real briefly, July 1st, because, oh, actually, I was at mid-month meeting also, but people put it on their calendars. July 1st is fireworks and was some live music down at the, at the farmer's market, the general area, that'll be happening. The, sorry, what else I got here? Yeah, just over the weekend, shout out to police and fire for the, being able to make the car show happen. They were able to block the whole thing off, and, and sometimes chiefs are always all over stuff. Chief made sure it was done right, and he delegated it, so he had an officer out there making sure it was all done, so he, he was able to enjoy the car show himself. We had some really nice cars out there, it was, it was a neat thing to see, and if you didn't get to make it, it was a little on the warm side, but it really was a nice event. And I saw a whole lot of folks out there, so it was just really enjoyable. But, yeah, this past weekend in town was just busy, we've got a lot of things going on, so it's just a great time to be in Abingdon. And then the fiddlers convention coming this, this coming week, so that should be good as well. I don't like violins, but I like fiddles, so we're good.
Okay, do we have any council member reports?
Well, the town manager was talking about how nice and warm it was this weekend, the weekend before. The mayor, myself, and Donna were at the splash pad opening in a downpour rain with umbrellas and freezing today. And then the next day, Mr. Anderson, myself, had the privilege of, and it was a great honor and a great privilege to participate in the, the veterans' celebration up at the Veterans Park. But it was really, really cold up there that, that day, but, but it was, it was a great time.
Nice turnout too.
I'm sorry.
Nice turnout.
Yes, it was a good turnout.
Nice turnout.
Shout out to, to the Rotary Club, as has already been mentioned, for the splash pad and the work that they did with that. We had a good turnout of Rotary Club members, and they're also going to participate in the fiddlers' convention this week, so lots going on.
It's best place in the world here.
As everyone knows, school is out. The rec, the rec center has got the daycare going on, there's still some open spots up there if anyone needs daycare for their kids in the summertime. I do a lot of things with my kids in the summertime, the public library, every Tuesday and every Thursday at 10 o'clock, they have children's programs, they have reading programs over there as well. Something really nice to check out. As far as anything else, just to touch on the Veterans Memorial, we had a, a great turnout there, the weather wasn't what we really expected. We couldn't do the flyover, and the lady that was, showed up to do, was going to do the singing, we couldn't do that, but really pleased with the turnout with that. And looking forward to maybe seeing everyone on the Barter Greens the 10th of June for the children's programs that will be starting at 10 o'clock. And we'll feed into the adult programs later in the day, so big shout out to the Washington County Public Library. My kids are in swimming lessons at the rec center today, I had opportunity to go there for the first time in a long time. The parking lot at the rec center was full, there was probably maybe 100 to 120, 30 people outside at the public pool. And there was probably inside with the swimming lessons counting mothers and fathers, and everyone trying to learn to swim, about 70 to 80 people as well. I did get a chance to go inside and look at the, the.
Basketball court or over at the skate park or anything like that, but I think that everyone at the rec center is doing a wonderful job there. And another thing I want to give a shout out is to the IT people with the town.
I've got my phone now, I get all my emails through my phone, I've yet to pick up that laptop since I came in. I just want to let everybody know in the IT department, wonderful job with that, and for the people in the Public Works and the police as well. Everybody just keep doing what you're doing, I think everyone's doing a nice job, and we will get this budget straight. I just know when Mike Troutman does a great job with what he's, excuse me, Steve does a great job with what he does, sorry about that, Steve.
I think it's my brother.
Yes, sir, we'll go, we'll ride with that one, yeah, but.
Everybody inspires.
I'll go to the next one.
Yes, sir, I just think with everybody that we've got on board that, you know, everything is looking promising for the town of Abingdon. I'm just really proud to be serving on the council of the town of Abingdon.
I echo everything everybody said, and the, the veterans' event was, was cold, the splash pad was cold, but I'm hoping with the nice weather, people are enjoying the splash pad now, and the, and the kids, what are, somebody asked, what are the hours, if they're 10 to 6?
10 to 6.
10 to 6.
10 to 6.
Until the water runs out, whichever is better.
Okay. On the splash pad, and, and then also our veterans advisory board, they mentioned the field of flags, and that was really neat. And I went over there to help them take it down, and I have never seen such a smooth operation in my life as the dismantling of that field of flags. It was done in a jiffy, and they knew exactly how to do it, and it. It was done in a jiffy and they knew exactly how to do it. And it must be the military background because that was an operation. But everybody in the town is doing such a great job. I appreciate our vigorous and healthy debate tonight. And I'm glad that we were able to honor our sports teams. And I understand that the tennis team and the baseball team are still in the running. So hopefully we'll get to have some more of our young people here in the near future to honor them for their accomplishments. Okay, now we have appointments to boards and committees. And I think that this is a pretty straightforward situation because we are just reappointing some people. So for the veterans advisory board, we have the reappointment of Lynn Bennett, Kyle Craig and Francine Ivory, who are all eligible to serve an additional term. For the arts commission, we have the reappointment of Matthew Frederick, Ben Jennings and Dirk Moore. They are each available and eligible to serve an additional term. So if it meets the council's approval, we will just accept a motion to appoint all six of those members to those boards at one time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Okay. So motion by Mrs. Quech, I called you the right name this time, second, second, by Mr. Austin, do we have any discussion? If there is no discussion, can we please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Ms. Quech.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye.
And we have no closed session. So I will call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.